United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Somebody say, "Hans." Thank you. For anybody who doesn't know me, I'm John Tellon, Chairman of the Board of Fire Commissioners. We have Mike Pedro, Woody Gesel from my lab, and Mr. Pedro right here, the other Pedro, to my right. The gentleman on the end of the table is Dave Whitfield, he's our engineer. I forgot the exits, all these doors except for that one gets you outside. I'm gonna turn it over to Mike now, because he's more or less been the honcho on the way through in this.
Okay, good evening, everybody. As John introduced us all, this is a meeting. The purpose of the meeting this afternoon is a public hearing. We are required by law to have two public hearings. We had one a week or so ago. We've put the same presentation on for the village board and the town boards. So, but before we start, got a couple of rules of order I'd like to discuss here. We will entertain questions throughout the presentation. We ask that you direct your questions to the board. The board will answer the questions, and if we need some clarification, we'll ask for it. I'd like to cut down on the intercommunal chatter, I guess. We just ask you state your name and your address, and we'll do our best to answer any and all questions. And with that, do you need a motion to go to a public hearing?
I'd like a motion for a public hearing.
Second?
Second.
Second by Dale, all in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
And Dave, what do you?
Good evening, everyone. As Mike said, my name is Dave Whitford, I'm a municipal architect at ABF Northeast, and I've been with your Board of Commissioners the past couple of years on some facilities planning for your fire station, and we have a project that we'd like to present to you tonight. Before we get into that, I'd like to give you a little more background about the Champlain Fire District and what they do and the services they provide and the equipment they have. Starting off, sometimes people don't realize that Champlain Fire District is a legal entity that's required to provide fire protection services for the community, but the fire protection services are actually provided by the Niagara Homes Company, your volunteer firefighters and rescuers. So, some people don't know that, but that's pretty typical in most of our towns around in West Country. Just quickly, a list of folks that have been involved in the process, your Board of Commissioners, John introduced himself, Mike, Woody, James Lefebvre, Dale Pedro, and Kami Barker is also here tonight, the Board Treasurer and Secretary. And then your Niagara Homes Company Officers, Pete, the Fire Chief, Mike Baker, Corby Lefebvre, Jarvis, Dave Whitford, John P. Tellion, and Shane Brink. And I also like to mention during the presentation that for the past two years while we've been involved in this planning process, Pete Timmons, your Fire Chief, and Todd Jarvis, your President, have been very, very involved in the entire process. They've been coming to all the meetings for the past few years, and they have great contributions to this final, final design that we're gonna show you tonight, so they're very involved. This is a basic geographic map in the green area of the Champlain Fire District. Of course, it's bordered on the north side by Canada, on the east side by Lake Champlain, on the south side it goes down almost to the village of Shaysee, and on the west side it's bounded by St. John's Road. So, that's the Champlain Fire District geographic area. So, that's 2,300 parcels, about 2,300 parcels, 1,600 structures, about 59 square miles of area that is covered. And they, and they take about 200 calls per year, three to four per week, that kind of works out to three to four per week, and it serves a population of 5,600 people in our fire district. So, that's a basic map of the fire district. A little background on this current fire station, you can see a basic drawing on the right, you might be able to see the footprint of four fire trucks on the bottom, that faces Elm Street. So, there's four and a half bays, and then this room in the back, which is where we are right now, a small kitchen, and some bathrooms and some offices. So, it's a one-story steel building. It was built in 1986, so it's 30 years old. The total area is 4,600 square feet, four and a half bays, like I said, multipurpose room fits in an office, and it sits on about 3.2 acres of land. So, that's what we have today. We also wanted to show you the original property map, which is outlined in the yellow here. That was the original property back in 1986, it was about an acre of land. You can see that in the pink is the footprint of the current fire station in that area. And a few years ago, we'll give you a little more details in a minute, but the fire, the board decided to annex a property next door to enlarge the property available for the fire, for the fire district. That property became available, and we decided to go for it. So, that was the original property back in 1986. Just a basic list of the vehicles and equipment and services available, or that they have here, three pumper trucks, a tanker truck, a heavy rescue truck, rush truck, personnel van, a water rescue boat with a trailer, an UTV with a trailer, and also a portable generator that's mounted on the trailer. It started out in 1986 with about five vehicles, so they're up to kind of roughly 10, you can see, your count goes up. This is the headquarters and home base for the volunteer fire company, and there's about 46 volunteers, firefighters in the Niagara Homes Company right now, and that fluctuates a little through the years. The services that are provided by the volunteers is mutual aid to Vermont and Canada, rescues on Lake Champlain, they cover all border crossings, they cover hazardous spills on Interstate Northway, and also on the railroad that's parallel to Lake. They've assisted with animal rescue, cleaning up in the community when needed, search and rescue operations, they've also been called upon by the New York State EDC at different times for certain functions. Just to give you a basic idea of what a firefighter goes through, they initially go through 104-hour minimum initial mandatory training on and off-site to become a firefighter, and then they have to maintain that training by completing 40 hours of training per year, as all remember. So, each member started out with 104 hours, and then they play in 40 more hours of training every single year. Just a few pictures of the current fire station, if you haven't walked around, I'm sure they'd be glad to show you, but I think you can kind of see it's kind of cramped spaces here along the front facing Elm Street, on the picture on the left. On the picture in the middle, you kind of see the narrow aisle there between the building wall and the yellow fire truck, not necessarily a very safe situation. The photo on the right is actually a remotely rented space by the fire district because they cannot keep all equipment here, there simply isn't enough room to keep all the equipment and vehicles here. So, they rent space over on Oak, is it Oak Street? Oak Street, and then you can see they store the personnel van, the boat, the UTV, and other truck, simply because there's not enough space here. And that's costing the fire district about $6,000 a year in rental, plus the heating costs, because they're also paying the heating cost to store those vehicles remotely. And I'm told by the board and the firefighters that that affects the response time when they receive a call here, they come here, if they need the boat or the van or something like that, there's an extra step to go over to Oak Street, get the equipment that they need, and that affects the response time for the call. So, that's just a few pictures of what they have today. As Mike was saying, this process actually started a couple of years ago, actually way back in 2012, the board started to discuss the lack of apparatus space and aging building issues. And then in 2014, as I mentioned, they purchased the property next door, the property became available, and it seemed to make sense at the time, and so they purchased that property back in '14. So, in the spring of 2014, they decided to initiate a formal assessment of the fire station and form a project committee. And then in the summer, they engage a professional consultant to help look at the facilities and look at different ideas on what they could do to improve space and improve the building. They spent the rest of the year, from August to December, exploring all kinds of ideas, including a new station, different addition sizes and shapes and locations on various renovations. And in November of 2014, we completed a building condition assessment and basically concluded, you know, there is a severe lack of space and there's some other building, building issues as well. It took a little pause there in the winter of '15, and then in the spring and summer, the board kind of finalized what they wanted to do with the input, of course, from the Fire Chief and the President of the Homes Company, and they came up with a project that was $4.2 million, 8,600 square feet. And the board thought long and hard about that, and they basically were not comfortable presenting that project to the community, so they shot it down. They shot down their own project, so to speak, and they rejected that estimate and decided to scale down the addition and scale down the project. And then in December, we shrunk everything down, and we came up with this project, which we're gonna show you in a minute, which is a smaller addition and obviously a lower So, this is what the project's all about. If you look at the drawing, it's that in the blue area is the footprint of the current fire station, I can, you can see the fire trucks on the left, the footprint of the fire trucks on the left facing Elm Street, so that's in the light blue area, that's the current fire station. The area in the pink is the proposed addition. The addition would be approximately 61 feet wide, 98 feet long, about 6,000 square feet. And that would consist of three large apparatus bays, you can see right here, where they would be able to put their larger, larger fire trucks, fire, fire department office, a small meeting room, and a new, a new boiler room as well. In addition to that, they're proposing a multipurpose room to the right of that, with a capacity of about 100 people seated in this area here, with a kitchen and some public bathrooms. That would be used for fire department trainings, briefings, you call them, incident briefing, command post, all different types of functions on behalf of the fire department. It would also be available to the community as well, as a public, you know, public space that would be available for use, just like they do now in this current room. Some other minor alterations that they would like to incorporate in the project, and we did start out with a much larger list of renovations, and this has been scaled down as well, but they'd like to convert this room into a standby room for the fire rescue personnel. Part of the reason for that is that ever since 9/11, there's been a lot of studies done that show that firefighters are getting cancer at a much higher rate than the average citizen. And they found out that that's coming from contamination partially at the fire station, because the firemen coming back to the fire station with soot and contaminants on their gear, and it's getting released into the building and on the floor and different areas, and unfortunately get carried home and that kind of thing. So, fire station design is kind of changing, and they're trying to separate public areas from the fire matic areas. And one of the smallest rooms in this project, but a very, very important feature, is called a decon room. They'd like to take the existing men's room and convert that into a decon room. So, that's the place where the firemen come back to the station, right up to the fire, go into the decon room, hose down their gear, and try to get, you know, 80, 90% of that contaminant and soot off in their equipment before they put it in the washer and dryer. So, a small room, but a very important feature, and that's part of what's coming through the fire station design nationally because of the studies about cancer. The other bathroom, they would like, that's just behind me, they'd like to convert that into a dedicated bathroom for the fire department, because there will be two new bathrooms in the addition, convert the existing office into a radio room, and then do a little bit of cosmetic work on the outside and place society and add some maintenance building. So, that is the essence of the project that they're proposing, primarily the addition in the pink area and a little bit of renovation to the existing station. In addition to that, they want to make some significant site improvements around the building. You can see the addition in the pink area, so this is the current footprint of the fire station today, and then in the pink is the proposed addition. Because the property slopes upward as you go back, it presents a little bit of a challenge to regrade the site, which is ample flat space for fire trucks to maneuver and turn around and so forth. So, that's a lot of site work involved. In addition to that, they would like to create some real legitimate, for lack of better word, legitimate parking here. So, in the area, in the yellow stripped area, you can see some proposed parking lot locations for about 50 cars, so that when there are large fire events, or there's community events, or some other large function going on here, there's plenty of parking for people, but there's also plenty of space for fire trucks to get in and out of here to maneuver. In addition to that, one of the other major features they'd like to do with the site work is the current driveway is very narrow as you come into the fire station right here. It's kind of a bottleneck for the drivers, and what they would like to do is expand that driveway width all the way to the, to the west property line, and that's what this orange packed area is trying to represent. So, they would open up the driveway from the corner of the property to its current location, and that would make it a lot easier for truck drivers to pull in the front and back the vehicles into the fire station, which is very difficult right now. So, that's the majority of the site work that's proposed. There'll be drainage, of course, and utilities involved in the site work as well. So, the cost, that's usually the most popular question or topic, is how much is it gonna cost? The estimate for general construction is $1,560,000. Mechanical, electrical plumbing, that's all your HVAC systems, your lights, your power, your bathroom, and so forth, that's estimated at $683,000. The site work I just talked about, $630,000 to expand the driveway, regrade the site, pave all the parking, build some retaining walls, $630,000. And then there's a line item called project development cost, $496,000. In the industry, we also call that soft cost. That is the cost of design, bid spec, drawing, final construction drawings, they have to hire bond counsel, fiscal advisors, clerk of the works, you may have heard that term before, that's the project inspector that comes to the job every day and inspects the work, make sure the contractors are following the plans. So, that's in that line item called project development. So, that's how we get to the total project cost of $3,369,000. The Board of Commissioners have been saving money for the past several years, and what they have decided to do is to take some of that money from savings, $200, I'm sorry, $250,000 to help offset the cost of the total project and bring down the cost of the project to $3,119,000. So, the estimate of tax increase would have been about 80 cents per thousand dollars if they didn't have a reserve, and because they have a reserve, they're using the reserve payments to also offset the cost of the taxpayers, that brings the tax rate down to 58 cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. So, for example, if you have a home valued at $80,000, your annual increase would be about $47 a year, and if you broke that down into 12 months, it's less than $4 a month. If your home is assessed for $100,000, you'd be looking at about $58, $58 annual increase in your taxes, and you can continue to calculate from there, because the point five eight is it was a constant figure that you can use to calculate for your own home. So, about 58 cents per thousand. If the project's approved by the voters, people are asking, "Well, what's the schedule? When are we gonna build?" So, we're having our public meetings and referendum, of course, in July. If that's successful, then we'll proceed to design and construction drawings, specs, and bidding documents for the rest of the year. We'd like to bid the project in the, in the winter of 2017, that's a great time of year to be bidding commercial projects, that's when your big commercial contractors are looking for work for the next year, when the snow's gone, so it's a great time of year to be bidding. You'll notice I put a "for" after that, bid projects to contractors. Because the fire district is a, is a municipal entity, just like your town or your school, they are obligated to follow the general municipal laws of the state of New York, and that requires four contractors for a building project. You have to hire a general contractor, a plumber, an electrician, and a heating contractor, and that's a state law, and all your towns and schools follow the same law. That was created a long, long time ago. A little bit more complicated to run the construction, but gotta get everybody to get along and use the work. So, if that goes well, the bids come in good, they would award construction contracts in the spring, get materials ordered, and then build the project next year, and hopefully be done around Christmas of 2017. So, that's the rough schedule for the project. Some final comments from the board. The fire station has been the home base during national disasters such as the ice storms, I think we probably all remember that. They feel this is a sensible addition, an alteration project that's more economical than a new fire station. Remember I said they did look at that idea that was just way, 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 way out of our range, so this is a much more sensible project. This project's not a wish list, they feel that improves the addition, if necessary, to keep all the equipment under one roof, help reduce the cost of operations, and probably help improve response times. So, the vote is a week from tomorrow, Tuesday, July 26th, 3:00 to 9:00 PM, right here at the fire station, as in this room here, in this room here, and just like your annual elections, I guess, right here on Elm Street. And I know they very much appreciate your support for the project, and we'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
If I'm correct, we're currently paying $1.346 per thousand?
Yes.
Is that right? And with the 58 cent increase, we'd be going through $1.926?
Correct, yes.
What are the contingencies? You have a category of contingency, what kind of item does that include?
It's a general contingency of approximately 10% for the whole project, so there's about $340,000 in contingency in there. That's because the project hasn't been designed yet, it's very common practice to include a margin in there, because they cannot go over this amount. If you approve this amount, 3.369, the fire district cannot exceed that number for any reason at all, so we try to include a reasonable contingency for things that we haven't foreseen yet.
And how does the project development cost reach that level?
Well, when you add up that cost for design and the lawyers and the clerk of the works, that's approximately what it would be. The statewide average is 20 to 25% for all those, what we call soft costs. You have to pay the lawyer for the bond when they set up the resolution, you have to pay the lawyer again when they, when they sell the bond at the end of the project. Design costs are gonna be in the range of, I don't know, 6 to 7% of the total, that's for design, bidding documents, and oversight of the project during construction as well. You have to have somebody overseeing the project to pay that, that cost as well.
They can monopolize, but then site work at $630,000, how did that come about, and what were the, what were the items that were included in that, and how was it, just how was that number come about?
We gave the board an actual itemized list of that, every item that we foresee right now is grading, paving, water mains, sewer mains, sorry, a lot of drainage here, there's a, there's a significant, I guess you'd call it a town or village, water main that traverses the property that's gonna have to be either rebuilt or worked around it, it comes right down through the middle. A couple of small retaining walls, one here and one here, because the property goes up like this, remember, so we gotta hold back the dirt while we give them nice level areas for their vehicles and fire trucks. So, when you add it all up, it does get very expensive. One thing I'll mention that has a dramatic impact on cost is how, if you're familiar with New York State Revealing Wage, it's basically million lasers, so all the workers that work for the contractors that build the project have to be paid for the daily wage. And the basic rate starts out around $32 an hour for a laborer, and goes up to $75 to $85 an hour for your skilled tradesmen, your electricians and your plumbers and so forth, and even higher for operating engineers. So, that has a very dramatic impact on the cost, usually at least 20 to 30% higher than a project that's built by a private entity. So, it's unfortunate, but it all adds up. We just, we just bid a project out for the Keysville Fire District down in Keysville, and their addition's actually smaller, their renovations are much higher, but it's, it's $3.4 million is what the bid came in at, right, exactly what our estimate was. And I know that's hard for everyone to kind of get comfortable with. I've been doing this for 38 years, and I'm still not comfortable with it, I don't know, I don't understand why it costs so much, but it does, unfortunately, municipal construction is very expensive.
One of the things we looked at was the parking lots, and we had considerable discussions about that, because we're gonna be paving these, and the option was just have a gravel base and not pave it, but then the discussion came about, if we don't pave it now, when will we pave it, because it's such a cost, so we included in as part of the project, because trying to move around a gravel driveway, I don't think it's very feasible, so that adds cost. Every time you do something, it adds cost, and yes, it's astronomical, I agree with you.
The general philosophy in most of our municipalities kind of dovetails what Mike said. We wanna do everything we think we need in the 20-year financing period. We don't wanna go back to the taxpayers in five years and say, "Oh, we forgot, we should've done this," because then you gotta redo the whole financing package and everything. So, this'll be financed around 20, 22 years, and the concept is, let's do everything we think we really need for the next 20 years, and we don't have to go back to the taxpayers.
Mike, is there any new anticipated equipment to be bought that won't be able to be housed?
How do you justify those three big bays, I think is what...
Well, the three big bays are gonna house our larger trucks that we have out there, but we're gonna be doing, hopefully, bringing everything out of the off-site spot that we ran.
Right, which is a van and a trailer and a boat and another trailer.
And there's some small equipment there, but that'll occupy a lot of the, you know, original station, so the big pumper, the heavy rescue, and these guys are experts on the trucks, I'm not, they would go in the new part, which are gonna be bigger, wider, more expanded, because if you look around out there, there is no room to walk around anything, which is that OSHA requirement, the chapter has so much room around your fire vehicles, and we don't have that. Somebody bends down and somebody opens the door, somebody's gonna have a headache.
So, you're saying it's 20 years to pay it off?
20 to 22 years, it's up to the bond counsel, you know, they look to get the best rates for the best longevity, and on a building with an addition, it's not like if you're building a new building where you could get 30 years, so they, you know, the bond people look at that and mark it, and that's why we hire them to get us the best rates.
I don't have the idea what you guys actually do, but how come you don't have a ladder truck? Is that something you don't really need around here, or...
I would ask the chief to answer that question, I'm not a fireman.
We have a, a mutual aid system, we have one neighboring department has down there, for us to go out and purchase a ladder truck would cost over millions of dollars, which we have one under the mutual aid program, to have it next door, we really don't need one, that's okay.
Okay. I thought it was gonna be a trick question to say, "We got a new building, now we use a ladder truck."
No, there's one just across the border from St. Paul, Quebec, we got one District 3, they've all been here before for our bigger fires, but no sense in buying one if their neighbors are willing to break it. It's cheaper to borrow than to buy.
Other than maintaining our, our existing trucks that we have, I don't think there's anything in the works to buy any, any new vehicles other than maintain, I mean, we have a 10-year plan to replace certain vehicles as they age with time, but as far as expanding past what we can house in there, I personally don't see it.
And that reserve does not include that contingency for replacement of vehicles, is that right? The $250,000 that you have in reserve, is that all?
No, that's...
That's separate, that's a separate item. That's separate, that's a separate item.
That's a capital improvement fund specifically for the building. Now, there are funds for replacement of the equipment, and you put a certain amount of money away every year for that. Now, the reserve, we're going to be taking two hundred and fifty thousand out of our capital reserve to put into this project, there's gonna be approximately four hundred thousand in that, but the balance of that, when we originally looked at this project, we wanted to change the roof on here, because it's thirty years old, the big doors that we have, again, they're thirty years old, and we thought that we would include that, well, that made the project, you know, we couldn't afford it. So we decided that we would save some money on the side and probably do one or two doors a year as they wore out, because they're not gonna last another thirty years, I mean, I don't see that happening.
They don't seal the ladders.
You know, the roof is in good shape, it's a standing seam roof, but again, it's thirty years old. So we're trying to plan ahead. Everything we have here is all paid for, we don't have a loan for anything, and you guys did a good job, well, before, when I took your place, you guys did a good job managing the money, so, you know, we wanna continue along with those same lines.
Every truck that we bought, it has been paid for. But this is no bigger than a truck.
Do you anticipate a larger amount of calls, two hundred calls per year, for the two dollars per thousand that we're gonna be paying? Do you anticipate, I mean, I'm not looking to have someone have tragedy by any means, but?
I don't know that we would get more calls unless the, you know, building expanded here, or the population grew a lot more. I would think it'd probably stay about the same.
Could you cover the township of Champlain now?
Yes, yes. It's, to try to consolidate everything we have so we can keep our costs down. I mean, the building is thirty years old, it's not very energy efficient, we're in the new addition, there's gotta be certain building goals, you know, as far as energy goes, so we're looking to save money in the future on building costs and storing our equipment. We can get away from some of those costs, hopefully we can bring the tax rate down over time.
And I do the renovations in here, it'll be brought up to the current code also, yeah, energy efficiency.
Do you guys ever have no-shows on calls?
Chief?
It all depends time of day, majority of our people work out of town, we'll get three, four people out, but we have the automatic mutilate system, again, if we don't see anybody showing up about Rouse's Point. Depending on location, more, chazy, they're all right there, so, somebody will be there.
Anyone else?
If you go back, go back to the cost per thousand, I listened again tonight, and the way it's presented, it's not the way that math works. The two hundred and fifty thousand is about seven percent of that three million three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, and according to those figures, it takes over a quarter, over twenty-five percent of the cost out. So that two hundred and fifty thousand is not saving us that, but you did tell us that that original figure, the eighty cents per thousand, was probably based on the four point two million that you had originally. But the way you're presenting it here, it sounds like that, that little quarter of a million, which is a lot of money, but is taking out over twenty-five percent of the cost, and it's only seven percent of the cost for it, so it doesn't work out mathematically, so.
You did the research on that.
The reason that it does drop so dramatically is because, in addition to the board taking two hundred and fifty thousand out of their current savings, they're also going to use the annual appropriation of, I think it's sixty thousand dollars that they're appropriating every year, it was the budget, to help offset the new annual payment on the bond. So when the fiscal advisor has calculated the difference between what it would have been and what was proposed at fifty-eight cents, they're taking into account borrowing two hundred and fifty thousand from the, from the reserves and savings, and using the annual appropriation of sixty thousand to offset that tax rate as part of the payment for the annual.
So this is sixty thousand that you're already appropriating?
Yeah.
Okay, that, you know, that doesn't explain it that way, does it?
That's where the two hundred and fifty came from.
Yeah, no, well, you know, you got two hundred and fifty, yeah, that's, you got two hundred and fifty accumulated, but that makes it sound like you're taking out a quarter of a million and drops it twenty-two percent, well, take out another seven hundred and fifty thousand, and it's zero, you know, but that's, that's not the way it is.
We put money aside every year for the capital fund, and we're gonna continue to take that money to pay on the bond.
Right.
Rather than accumulate.
Right, so it'll be the sixty thousand plus whatever is raised by this. The site work, six hundred and thirty thousand, that's prevailing wage. If you just hired somebody with a backhoe and paving and did that, you could probably get that work done for the quarter of a million and take that six hundred and thirty thousand out of the.
You can't do it, you can't do it.
You can't do any, if it's not part of this capital project, any work you do here has to be prevailing wage.
Anything over twenty thousand dollars has to be prevailing wages.
Get out and contract.
So you get back into the design, the whole ball of wax again, you gotta go back, gotta hire consultant, bond counsel, legal advisors, attorneys to draft these documents, and then go out to bid, you know, so that's why we included it with this. It's a lot of money for site work, I agree, I, when I saw the numbers, I asked Dave, I mean, we were all sat there, God, he's kidding me, but unfortunately, that's the cost of construction today. Anyone else?
Was the project news letter mailed to every citizen in the town?
We tried to get as many as we could, we went through the Clinton County Planning Department to get names, addresses, and labels of all registered landowners within the town.
I'm the only one, or we're the only one on our street that got one.
I've heard that from several people, that a lot of people didn't get them. I kinda knew it was gonna happen, because we've been through this before with other projects, but unless you know everybody and go street by, it's next to impossible. I don't know how the county breaks them out, because we had to break out Rouse's Point from the town of Champlain, which they must have a program for it, or whatever, but we tried to get them to as many people as we can, we still have some that, you know, pass out, and hopefully the word of mouth gets out.
It's online on the town website, too. It's on there, I looked at it.
On the town or the village?
The town.
Yes, oh, good.
You can download it, so.
Anyone else? Everybody's happy.
Will Billy have better air conditioning in it?
That's part of it, yes.
Are they gonna advertise a vote in the paper so that homeowners will have a chance to vote on it?
We have to legally advertise it.
Haven't seen it.
It's gone now.
Yeah.
Otherwise, there'd be more people here tonight.
We put it in the paper, we do the best we can to get the word out, I mean, I don't know what else we can do. I kinda think the board bent over backwards, we worked on this newsletter for a long time, and how we're gonna circulate this, and, you know, we're trying to provide a, we don't want any secrets, I mean, it is a lot of money, there's, like I keep saying, there's no doubt about it, and, you know.
Especially with that water deal going through, too.
Ah, you can't hold the fire department hostage over the water.
I know that, but, still.
I keep hearing that, and I'm not, I'm not buying that argument.
Our taxpayers gotta pay more money.
I realize that.
Mike, I have one question with the decon room, we go in, what happens with that water? How does it get treated?
Goes through the municipal system.
There'll be, there'll be a fordrain in there that will collect the water, so that is drained into the municipal sewer. With the other, the other.
Well, I'm talking about any contaminants that are in the water, is it, is there a filtration system that passes through first and fourth?
It's not required by the plumbing code, but it's a good thought. I mean, it's probably evolving in the building codes right now, but there's no requirement for that. There is for the kitchen, there is for a grease trap required in the kitchen.
The DEC probably regulates that, the wastewater.
Yep. That's a good thought.
Upper, upper Jay put a, just put up a brand new station, the governor paid for it, and theirs has a tank, and, it's the name of those guys that come around, Safety Clean, comes in and pumps it out twice a year.
Like a holding tank, something like that.
Yep. That's, that's where a lot of the money comes in, is stuff like that, that you don't, you don't really think about, you know, when it gets all done, you've gotta put that tank in, and you've gotta have a place for the water to go, and, and all of this stuff, and they, that adds up so quick, it's pathetic.
I noticed you had a trench drain in the new three-bay area.
Yes.
Where will that go?
That goes to a.
That goes to an oil water separator before it goes into the sewer system.
And there's nothing currently on the front of the building where the four rigs are now?
There's just one, one fordrain there, I think.
Building's thirty years old.
That wasn't thought about, huh, John?
Codes were different, codes were a lot different.
Basically, if it was legal when it was built, it's legal today, until you do an expansion like this, now you gotta bring it up to standards. This is where some of that extra money that we have is gonna come into play after the project is done, on smaller things that we need to upgrade. Anyone else?
Nice job with the pressure.
Thank you. Many worked on it, Dave, the board, we spent a lot of time with this. I mean, before I, I got on the board, Chris is here, Chris was working on a project way back when, and, I don't know, it's been a long time coming, so.
Well, it's, it's not an easy project, there's a lot of, I wasn't gonna say it tonight, but there's a lot of time, effort, blood, sweat, and tears that went into this project. And what you don't see, what you don't see here is that there's been a lot of time, blood, sweat, and tears, in this stage, you make a complaint. It was a village fire department, we started off with no money, everybody, at least every, almost every fireman in this room, you guys like Floyd especially, put a lot of, lot of time in here, filling in the corners in the back, and all this kinda good stuff, and that's how I got on the board, because I asked him when I was fire chief to consider helping out with this project, knew all the available, available spots in town, and, so there's a lot of time put into this, you know, a lot of time, we lay a lot of different people, and it's a good plan, it's a, no matter what you do, it's not an easy project. The building is old, thirty years old, seems like it was yesterday when it was built. Back then, though, it was a step up. It was a step up because it was a smaller station that, when I first joined, it was, there was no room between the trucks, you had to move a truck to get into the trucks. So it's a, it'll, again, there's just so much time and effort put in here. It is too bad about prevailing wages, I was in a position at one time, I kinda still am, where I'd like to see the fire and EMS together, that's not the case anymore, the EMS built a separate building on the side on Route Eleven, and at the end of the day, it was probably a good thing. Not because we wanted separation, but because it was the right thing to do at the time. As the agency evolved, so did the building, so did, it's just the right time. As this agency evolves over time, this is the right time, too. So what you don't see is commissioners, commissioners before them put a lot of, a lot of work into this, into this project. And old Dave's working on engineering projects in the past, and he doesn't take things lately either, so I know every, every dollar and every cent's accounted for here, so, everybody's doing a good job.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to thank you guys for service, you provided the community, you're always there, appreciate it.
Doesn't matter which way the vote goes, if something happens, the firemen will be there, I guarantee that. If that's, no more comments, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Don't forget to come and vote, be seated now.